Call the meeting of the Woodya Regional Votech School Committee to order. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. O'Conna?
Yes.
Ms. O'Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
I'm here, too, in case you didn't want to check.
Chair?
Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes September 11th, 2024, minutes of the regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve of the minutes of September 11th.
Motion?
Made by Mr. Irvin, seconded by Ms. Coppinger. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Conna?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report for September. Is there a motion?
To accept the Treasurer's report.
Motion by Ms. Truce. Mr. Fitzgerald, any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Conna?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone here for public comment?
I have a handout that I can share with you. Thank you. Most people, I've been to many of these meetings, so you probably recognize me, and I've spoken at quite a few. I'm Bernie Cullen from Rowell. And first point I'd like to make is that this time of year, I try to review the MCAS results primarily for Triton, but this year I looked at the results for Whittier and other vocational technical schools, as well as the other kind of comparative schools compared to Triton. And I have to say that Whittier's MCAS results are very impressive. In fact, they surpass Triton's, which is a, it's not that there isn't more room for improvement, but that's a step in the right direction. So that's the good news. The not-so-good news is that I've heard about the meetings that have taken place in the last couple of weeks in terms of the Whittier Agreement, and the results and the outcomes are extremely disappointing. So the first step is to take a look back at the results of the election or the vote in January. And as the data shows, it was an overwhelming, a massive defeat. You don't find votes where over 70% were no's. It just doesn't happen. So last January, that vote was massively rejected. The building proposal was massively rejected. In Rowell and Ipswich, 90% of the voters turned down that proposal. That's two of the 11 towns, 90%. Overall, out of the 11 towns and cities in the district, 10 of them rejected it by clear and decisive margins. Only one voted for it, and even then, over 40% of their voters, the voters of Haverhill, said no. So this overwhelming defeat of your building proposal was fundamentally due, in my opinion, to Whittier not listening to the cities and towns. I know you have an outreach program going on now, but there's still, in my mind, no real listening to the towns. Otherwise, you would not have had this last week, a vote in Haverhill, 11 to nothing, to essentially not change the agreement. The 1967 agreement no longer works and has not since the late 1980s. The demographics of the district have shifted dramatically. I was here when Whittier opened back in 1973. I remember what those dynamics are. You can go back and you can look at the demographics at that point, and they were very different from what they are now. Newburyport was not the golden spot in Essex County. It just wasn't. There were some nasty jokes about Newburyport, but I'll leave that to your imagination. The Haverhill City Council's 11 to nothing vote against any material changes in the agreement ignores the need of the other cities and towns, and will result in another embarrassing vote. Changing the building design and getting the state to cough up more money will not change the outcome. It just will not. Without significant changes in the Whittier Agreement, the cities and towns will reject any joint effort with or without northern Essex. It's a smart move, but it's not going to work. Without addressing the agreement, you are essentially wasting your time and our money. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand your point. However, we don't have any role in the operating agreement. That is those cities and towns, and we certainly don't have any control over the Haverhill City Council or the city of Haverhill's mayor on their position. So this body by statute doesn't have any veto power, anything that we can do. Those are the bodies that affect that. So I think that that message would be more geared towards the Haverhill City Council and the Haverhill Mayor's office than here, as those are the people that would be making those decisions, not this body. So I think, I understand the message, but I think it's delivered to the wrong body. Anyone else here? Public comment? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report. Haley Habib.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other members of the school committee. Welcome to a new month. For clubs, student government is preparing for Student Spirit Week starting October 15th, featuring Spirit Days and pep rally on Thursday, October 17th, to celebrate the fall sports. The homecoming dance will be held on Friday, October 18th, in the gym, and all students are welcome. Your book is in the process of receiving senior portraits. The deadline has been extended, and the portrait studio will be available until the deadline. Chess club is off to a great start. They have over 25 players and will be hosting their first tournament next week. The drama club elected officers for the first time in September, and they're busily planning for their first coffee house of the year. The club has also voted on a musical for the spring and chose Disney's The Little Mermaid. Poetry club has been very much into fall and nature poetry, as they're so lucky to live in the world with Octobers. Students love how J.G. Whittier wrote a poem called Autumn Thoughts and managed to include all four seasons in one poem. The jazz club had a meeting this past Thursday. They are looking forward to the club starting. The multicultural club is celebrating Hispanic and Latin Heritage Month with Wednesday morning announcements alongside Mr. Leganis. On October 10th, a meeting will present her Guatemalan heritage. The environmental club will be receiving their endangered landing turtles this week, and students will be responsible for their care throughout the year. They will also be starting their seedlings for the tower garden, the poets, along with some towers in some classrooms. Last weekend, key club members held the Eagle Tribune Santa Fund Colon One Tournament. In their latest meeting, they prepared rubber turkeys for the Kiwanis Club's Turkey Drop and discussed plans of the year, including holiday cards. Skills USA has been holding biweekly meetings with chapter officers who are leading general meetings. Students are preparing for the Veterans Day breakfast on November 9th at Whittier Tech. Members are working with Ms. Bragg, the culinary, and DVC departments to make sure the event is a success. The Indian Rocks Club is helping out Team Haverhill Booth at the River Racus, and they are helping community members fill out local community needs, health assessments through October. The ski club is getting ready for its annual raffle basket sales and waiting on triple approvals before announcing any meeting dates. The United Nations have been meeting regularly Tuesday afternoons and is off to a fantastic start. They've debated many international and national issues, and students have been introduced to the basics of the parliamentary procedure. The board game club is off to a great start. They've had a great group of students who are returning from last year and some new students joining in. It is an all-inclusive club that is gaming, collaborative, and fun. For sports, girls soccer is having a great season so far. They currently have six wins, two losses, and two ties. Their team goal is to make it to the state tournament while JV is undefeated. Cross Country has a lot of young talent and is looking forward to the CAC League meet in the end of the month. Football is off to a strong start. They are 3-1, led by senior leadership and young talent. Whittier is competing for the MIAA and state vocational playoff spot. The freshman remains successful with a lot of student athletes. Girls volleyball is still drawing large number of student athletes and continuing to work hard to improve throughout the season. Boys soccer has had a tough start with a young team and competitive CAC, but they continue to work hard. With talented freshmen and sophomores and no seniors, their effort is bound to pay off. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Principal Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Leganis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the school committee members. Just a few things here, some items to add on to our student rep. Meet the Academic Teacher Night is tomorrow night, October 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30. On this night, parents and guardians are able to follow their students' daily schedule, and teachers plan 10-minute presentations on the students' academic progress and classroom activities that go on. So should be well attended tomorrow night. We have our Spirit Week next, was October 15th, after our Monday Columbus vacation, through the 17th. And we have the pep rally. Student government advisors, student advisors, and assistant principals are planning this fun week for the kids. So that's going to be a blast. It always is, and hopefully Mother Nature will take care of the rest. Our homecoming dance will be on Friday, October 18th, from 7 to 10. Refreshments will be sold at the homecoming from our booster club. This dance is for Whittier students only, and tickets are on sale in the store for $10 each. And we had last year close to 800 kids. So right now, we have 29 chaperones and counting, and so hopefully that'll be another fun night for our students. We also have 289 students that are in our after-school activity clubs, which is pretty awesome, and we have 21 clubs that kids are getting involved. So I wanted to kind of throw that number at you, 289 kids are staying after school in our clubs. It's awesome to see that. Our guidance department has been working with college admissions representatives throughout the school year. Our annual college fair took place Tuesday, October 8th, during our lunches for students 11th and 12th grade. I just wanted to share a piece of feedback that we got from the college admissions reps, and one rep in particular reported that our students were some of the most polite and considerate she's ever encountered. She said that she's been to a lot of schools and met with thousands of students over the years. Whittier Tech ranks up at the very top. So that was an amazing thing to hear, because there were 54 colleges, place was packed with all our kids, and just so respectful, and to hear that is, again, amazing. The PSAT will be administered here at Whittier Tech on October 22nd, 23rd. 100 students have signed up, sophomores and juniors, about an even split right now. And then also, we talked about the safety. Whittier continues its commitment to safety of our kids and our staff. We're working, again, with students and staff throughout the year, monitoring school safety procedures and protocols. We're going to, hopefully, if Mother Nature, once again, will do some of the Alice drills coming up. We also pencil in, the open house will be held Sunday, November 3rd, from 1 to 4 p.m. So that's what I have. A lot of positive stuff happening here at Whittier.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Cosmos, you're up. Business managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. Couple of things that I have for you this month. The first is the review of the five-year capital plan, and it serves as a planning document, and it's updated each year to project the district's capital needs over a five-year period, and we use it in the budget development process. I need to be very clear about this, that it does not include anything having to do with the building, and there are a couple of reasons for that. As you know, we are awaiting a December decision to see if there may be another MSBA project, but regardless of whether that happens or doesn't happen, we still will have to deal with some issues here in the building. So we will be engaging in a facility study, like we did about 10 years ago, to develop more of a long-range plan for the facilities, you know, and it will depend a lot on what happens in December. But even if we do get the approval in December, that would not happen for a number of years, and there will be repairs that need to be made. So you will hear back from the superintendent and I after we're able to get somebody in here to do a more up-to-date study on what they think we should prioritize to keep the building in operating condition. You'll see from this particular report, many of the items listed were either already funded this year through grants or we have applied for grants. The anonymous grant and its denoted AG, we received $390,000, and they gave us equipment in CAD drafting, culinary, electrical, electronics robotics, HVACR, and marine tech areas. They were able to not only provide the machinery and equipment that they needed, but a lot of stuff that they wanted to try to bring their shops into, you know, into the current focus with whatever needs to be done. We also, culinary, down here, also received a $350,000 grant through Mass Skills Capital Grant, denoted as MSG. So that's on its way. We've ordered all of the equipment, and we're waiting for it to come. So there'll be a complete, almost remake of the culinary kitchen. The district has also applied for about a $200,000 grant, which would update the equipment in the metal fabrication area. That's denoted as a G, and we have not heard yet whether that will come in. But if you look at that, you'll see that much of our equipment has been really, really paid for by grants, and we are so appreciative, not only of the state grants, but also of the large anonymous grant that we received. So that is my update on the five-year capital plan, and you'll be hearing more from us on the building.
Any questions?
And then, it's the end of the first three months. Believe it or not, that's flown by. You'll see the variance analysis from July through September. You'll see that there's a couple of columns with quarterly transfers within the major functional categories, and that's to balance out the accounts, and those are mostly in the 4,000 series, the 2,000 series, and the 4,000 series. Most of the transfers which are in the 2,000 series are needed, because when we do the FY '25 budget, we're preparing it in January of 2024, and it's based on the 2024 staffing. When people come, and they leave, and they shift, and they cross over lanes, and they go down steps, and a lot of times, we don't know at the time what that will be. So we put a large sum of money in something called instructional. You see it in the budget every year, and that covers those types of unknowns, particularly when they move across the lanes in the salary schedule, because they get credits. So you'll see that we are in very good shape. We have plenty of surpluses in some accounts to balance the yellow spots in other accounts, and that happens, too. We buy things at the beginning, at the end of the year. The enrollment changes, needs change. So I would say that the accounts are in excellent shape.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we need to receive the request.
Do we need a vote on, I don't believe we need a vote on the variance report.
No, I don't think so. It's just informational.
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine, if you want to do it.
To receive both requests, business manager.
Motion by Mr. Irvin, seconded by Ms. Delai. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Conna?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cosmos. Next item on the agenda is the Associate Principal, Ms. Jensen, MCAS data.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Ms. Lynch, and school committee members. I am Katrina Jensen, the Associate Principal, and tonight I get to discuss the MCAS and our accountability. So we are still with MCAS 2.0. All students take the MCAS on their iPad, and the performance levels are staying the same at exceeds, meets, partially meets, and does not meet. While the performance rating names stayed the same, this is the first time in English that they raised the bar for the scaled score that the students had to get to pass. Previously, the last couple of years, they've had a lower bar for English. This is the first year that they've upped it to where the math was at 486. So that is why we only have one bar here, because we don't want to compare before, because it wasn't the same standard. So now, this will be our baseline for where we go from here. So as you can see, 94% passed on the first try, 12% got in exceeds, and 50% got into meets. So that's 60, more than 62% of our students passed the English test on the first try with either meets or exceeds. How did we do versus the state in certain subgroups? We are 5% above the state average for all students, 21% above for economically disadvantaged students, 17% above for high needs students, and 11% above for students with disabilities. How did the students grow over the last two years? Just to point out, in exceeds, from eighth to 10th, 10% got into exceeds more than they were in eighth grade, and in the did-not-meet, we had 11.9% decrease. So that is excellent. Next up is math. So math has had that 486 bar, so we do have some more data here. For the all students, 96% passed first time, 6% got into exceeds, which is triple what we had last year, and 44% got into meets. So again, there are 50% of the class passed the math in either meets or exceeds. Again, how do we compare to the state? For all students, we're 2% above. For economically disadvantaged, 20% above. High needs, 15% above. And for students with disabilities, we're 2% below. So that's an area that we are going to be looking at. Again, how did we grow from eighth grade to 10th grade? Our exceeds went up 3.6%, meets 14.3%, and then we did have a decrease of 8.4 in the did-not-meet. For biology, which is the test we take for science and technology, 98% passed on the first try, which is a huge increase from last year. 4% got into exceeds, and 53% got meets, which, again, is a huge increase. How did we compare to the state? We are 8% above for all students, 22% above for economically disadvantaged students, 20% above for high needs, and 19% above for students with disabilities. I don't have a growth chart, just so you know, for that, because in eighth grade, they just take a science and technology exam, and that is not what we give here at the high school, so we really can't compare the two exams. This is where we stand right now for all students, for the classes of 23 through 26. So the classes of 23 and 24, everybody graduated from Whittier Tech with a high school diploma. Right now, the seniors, I have one or two students I need to file a math appeal on, and then the class of 26, I have a few students I need to file a biology appeal on. But other than that, everybody has passed. Now, the great stuff. So as you know, Whittier Tech was a school of recognition this past fall when they released the scores, and we got that way because, and we were the only tech school, by the way, because we demonstrated progress towards our annual accountability targets. We exceeded all targets in achievement in English, math, and science, and we had high growth in English and math. The accountability categories, we have a 99.1% graduation rate. We had a 0% dropout rate. We exceeded the targets for chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. We had 100% of the students take the MCAS, and our accountability percentile is 70%. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No problems, good.
Next item on the agenda, Career Technical Education Coordinators, Ms. Crosby and Mr. Muscovitz.
Thank you, Chairman Wood, Superintendent Lynch, and the school committee members, for this time to give a CT update. My name is Paul Muscovitz. I am the Vocational Technical Cooperative Education Coordinator, and my co-coordinator, Amanda Crosby, will be giving this update. As you can see, our supervisor positions of overseeing these technical areas are on the screen. I will say that construction craft laborer is a new program. We started last year with introducing construction craft labor along with masonry to our freshman exploratory. Department of Education gave us the go-ahead to have it as a full freshman exploratory program this year, and we're this close to getting approval. Superintendent Lynch and I were on a Zoom call this afternoon, and it looks like it will be all set, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get the letter approving this program. Some of the community events updates. Our carpentry students finished up a project at Georgetown, American Legion Park, of a snack shack addition to the snack shack that's already there. And the CTI program this summer started it, and we finished it up last week. So that project is all buttoned up and is all set. We also finished up a project that was started last June for the Georgetown Police Department. Our metal fabrication shop designed and fabricated panels that would go into the jail cells to prevent any choking situations for people that are being detained in those cells. Our carpentry department had to go there last week and caulk the cracks that were in the panels so that no one could slide anything underneath the little cracks that are on the floor. So that's another project that's finished up that we helped out the Georgetown Police Department. We're in the beginning stages of a storage shed for our neighbor's table in Amesbury. Our carpentry department went out there and looked at the site. They are getting the materials donated by Home Depot, and we'll just go and build the storage shed. The storage shed is used to house tables and chairs, and snow removal equipment, and lawnmowers, so that they serve a meal every Wednesday, I believe, at the church that's adjacent to this storage shed. So it's really good that we are able to go out and help that situation. Our masonry, carpentry, and HVACR departments are exploring a partnership, and we've been talking for quite a while now with the Cogswell Art Center in Haverhill, and they're going to be doing some renovations in there, and we're going to try and help them out as much as we can with those projects that they have in store. The art program will be decorating the big dog in Bradford Commons in Haverhill, October 25th through the 27th. We've been doing this for the last few years, and the art department has a real good time with doing that. We also are in the process of starting our Santa Parade for the Haverhill and Merrimack Santa Parades that will be coming up this November and December. And we look forward to always participating in that project. So here's some really exciting news. Our cooperative education update. At this time, we have 53.21% of our senior class are on co-op. And every day, we keep adding to that number. So it's, it's growing really, really fast. There is some struggles here and there. One of the things that we're having struggles with is students don't have their licenses as early as they used to have them. So transportation is a big thing. We add new companies every, every year. We just signed on with an agreement with Local 22, the New England Laborers Apprenticeship Training. They're, they're part of our advisory board for construction craft laboring, and they really want to get involved. And that's just an exciting situation there. We also have two electrical students that got their pre-apprenticeship from the Department of Labor so that they would be able to go and be employed by an electrical company that does mainly union projects. And so our students are now pre-apprenticed through the state of Massachusetts. So now, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to industry-recognized credentials. This is something that's new in the frameworks, that the frameworks that are coming out, that are the new frameworks that are updated this last couple of years. And IRCs, or Industry Related Credentials, are a big part of the new frameworks. So, that being said, through the years, our juniors all will get OSHA 10 certification. So we have 285 juniors that will be taking that this year. We have 212 sophomores that will be taking the hot work certification. And our HVACR program sophomores will be doing their OSHA 10 and hot work. And then 17 of last year's students passed the EPA 608 Technical Certification in HVAC. So that's a huge test that they have to take. It's, it's, it's actually a very, very big thing for that industry to have that certification. And our co-op partners are very happy that our students are going out with those certifications. There's a new A2L flammable refrigerant certification that they're adding into this year. And we don't have any results yet, but hopefully, we'll have a good passing rate for that. The construction cluster, they've been going at a lot of the industry-related credentials. Hazcom, Ramset, Step Ladder, Safety, Vega, and Megapress certifications, Charlotte Pipe, Mitsubishi Installation, Latcre adhesive certifications. And these are all things that the students will benefit from when they go and become employed by companies that use this equipment. So what we do is we have the sales reps and the training people from those companies come in, and they're able to train the students. The students can use the equipment, and then they take a small test, and they pass the test, they get the certification. Sometimes out there in the trade, as far as plumbing is concerned, an inspector will ask, is anyone certified for this type of equipment? And our students will proudly pull out their cards to show the inspector that. I already touched on construction craft laborers for this career technical program update, but we're really excited for this. We feel that, you know, after two more years of having students in this area, our students will then be able to go out as they graduate and they're fast-tracked to the Union Laborers Union in their training. So it's, we're very happy about this. We're really excited, and it's going to be just another thing for our students to be able to get and then move on and become qualified construction craft laborers. I will now turn this over to Amanda Crosby. Thank you.
So just a little bit more information on the career technical program update. The freshman Wildcat speaker, our goal is to have four alumni speakers come during the school year. We're really looking for opportunities to let our students see what success looks like, somebody that looks like them, somebody that they can relate to, to really see the success that they can have out in industry. We continued for the second year with the freshman safety shoe program. Brunt has been very generous to donate 165 safety shoes for students, and Paul has really spearheaded that mission. Updated CTE frameworks, 12 out of our 24 programs have new state-approved frameworks. So the instructors have already worked on developing updated scope and sequences as well as unit plans. The next step is to implement them into their weekly lessons. We are in the process of piloting a program called CTE 360. It's a comprehensive platform for updating, updated programs to manage. So we're focusing on only the 12 programs that have approved frameworks. And it can manage things like competency tracking, student portfolios, lesson plans, advisory board. Really, you name it, anything that our career technical programs need, this platform is able to do for them. So we're in the early phases of getting that going. I just want to give you some information. Updates on adult education is another area that I oversee. We have 152 students just in electrical with the average class size of 30. We have 131 Tier 1 through 5 plumbing with the average class size of 26. If I could find more teachers, this building would be full of plumbers and electricians. We do, we do a very nice job, and students come back to us, and they go somewhere else, and then they still want to come back to us because they may not have, you know, found what they needed somewhere else, or other schools are opening their programs, they can't find teachers, then they kind of close them last minute. So we're very grateful to have highly qualified instructors who show up and help support this program because it really is essential to these plumbers and electricians. We have seven students enrolled in the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. We have seven students in cosmetology. That's going to wrap up shortly, and we'll start a new program in 2025. We've already started a wait, wait list. We have 100 students enrolled in personal enrichment courses such as basic woodworking, introduction to electrical, sewing, or photography. We still have spring enrollment open, but as of right now, we're about 100-plus students. This is the highest enrollment since, that we've had since before the pandemic. So we're, we're looking at about 400 people here at a night. And we really advertised, we mailed brochures to 75,000 homes before registration opened in August. So if you live in the community, hopefully, you got a brochure from us with all the night school information. Another thing that we do is over the summer, we have the CTI program. So I just want to give you some updates on that. Career Technical Initiative, it's grant-funded program, and it's for individuals that are considered underemployed or unemployed. We had 79, 79 students complete the training during the summer of 2024. The enrollment process and the whole program was a little bit smoother this year. We previously had partnered with Mass Hire, and this year, we were tasked with doing it all on our own. And I do have to say, like, with it all being Whittier, it was much more successful because at any point, the student was contacting somebody from Whittier versus calling Mass Hire and trying to figure out what was going on. So that aspect was a lot smoother. We're a little bit of go-getters, and not that Mass Hire's not, they're fantastic, but they are, I think, are very overwhelmed with the demand that they have. So we were very fortunate to be able to handle this on our own, and I think it was very successful. We had two career coaches in the building the whole time that the students were here. 39 students were employed the day they left here from training. So that was really good outcomes. We're in the process of getting updated outcomes. But we, since we started this summer program, we've never had 39 students walk out of here employed. And we are already awarded round nine, and we are starting enrollment, actually, we have a career fair tonight at Boys and Girls Club in Lawrence. So we've already started enrollment for the summer of 2025. And I know Kara mentioned, we, we did receive a $350,000 Skills Capital Grant for culinary equipment. So we're in the process of getting that done. Something that was released, we're partnering with Community Action, and we have, we're going to offer an ESOL. They're going to offer the language piece, and we're going to offer the career piece. So we'll use our welding program to train students that are learning English. And then we are actively pursuing new cap, new skills capital grants opportunities so that we can, you know, take more money from the state and not from the taxpayers. Well, still from taxpayers. That's it. Do you guys have any questions? Yes.
The CTI program, how many students were in there for the laborers program?
10.
10?
So we can take 10.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, every program except for electrical can hold 10 students. Electrical is two cohorts, so it's, it's 20.
And when this program gets approved, will it start for our students?
Oh, so the CTI is a summer program, but for the day school, Paul can answer that.
Yeah, so this year, we, because masonry and construction craft laborer has so much overlap with strands in the frameworks, we're splitting the sophomores, which are 20 sophomores, chose masonry and construction craft laborer this past year. And so we, we're going to flip them halfway through, and then fourth term, we're going to give them the option of what, what way do they want to go? Masonry or construction craft laborer?
Thank you.
Mr. La.
Question, so you had said, I think, about 53% of students who participate in co-op. And I guess my question is, what is your goal? What would you like that number to be? And then also, what are the major challenges or impediments to reach that goal? You mentioned transportation.
Yep. Okay, so last year, we had 387 students on co-op. That's seniors and juniors. That was 77.3% of our seniors were on co-op, and 48, almost 49% of our juniors were on co-op. So I will say that attending co-op coordinators group meetings and vocational coordinators meetings, we're probably the biggest in the state for co-op in the number of kids on co-op. I'd love to see it more, but there is a challenge that we do have, and it's a lot of times our students have no transportation. However, we do have one of our co-op liaisons who finds bus routes, finds other ways of getting these kids to their jobs. And to the point where she actually will take a student and another staff member and show them, this is where you're going to get on the bus, we're riding the bus, this is where you get off, you have to walk two blocks, and boom, you're there. So we're working on that kind of things with them. You know, we, we have some things that we're trying to work on to try and get maybe driving lessons here at the school, but it's still in the beginning stages.
Great, thank you.
Follow-up, Paul. So we don't have a bus, for those kids that don't have transportation, we don't provide a bus?
No.
For them to circle in the morning and drop them off?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Director of Pupil Personnel, Ms. Morrison, School Census.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, members of the committee, and Superintendent Lynch. My name is Christine Morrison, I'm the Director of Pupil Personnel Services. You received in your packet the district's October 1 census report. I have included the comparison of the enrollment data from the last year for your information. And as of October 1st, we have 1,285 students, which is four more than last year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Oh, it's true.
Sorry, just one. Is this the highest number of students we've had in Newbury? 24? Or maybe we've been close, but that's a, that's a really high number.
And that was the largest increase we've seen recently as well. Increased by seven students last year. Yes, I, I'm not sure if it's the most we've ever had.
Right, but I think it's really close.
It's the last I, yes. Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports and recommendations of the superintendent, Madam Superintendent.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'd like to update you a little bit about what's going on with Northern Essex and Whittier Tech. So yesterday was the first listening session with the UMass Donahue Institute and their study, looking at the partnership with us working together. There are three more listening sessions, and I would encourage everyone to participate in this important study. We do really want to hear from our community about the obstacles, the, the, you know, what we need to work on, how we can improve. It's really important that we hear from members of this committee, important that we hear from our town managers, mayors, members of the community. We really want to make sure that everyone has been heard and everyone feels like they're a part of whatever we move forward with. So there are more listening sessions. There's one on October 29th. There's one on November 12th, and there's one on November 19th. So I would really encourage all of you and anyone out there listening to really participate in this program. It's really going to provide us really invaluable feedback as we move forward with this possible building project. There was a meeting on September 24th with the town managers, mayors, select board members, and city councilors to discuss the Whittier Tech Regional Agreement. At this time, there is no agreement on the agreement, but all parties seem to be working towards some sort of a solution and working to understand each other's perspectives. On Monday, September 16th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Fall Expo. I was able to introduce the Secretary of Labor in Workforce Development, Lauren Jones. It was a wonderful event, and it was wonderful getting to know her a little bit better. On Wednesday, September 18th, I attended a remote meeting with Lane Glenn from Northern Essex Community College. At this meeting, we discussed the upcoming study with the UMass Donahue Institute. On Wednesday, September 18th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Meeting at Northern Essex Community College. I was able to tour their brand-new culinary program, which was, maybe a little envious, but I think we're getting grants for some of that culinary equipment, so that's the good thing. On Wednesday, September 18th, I, along with Kara Cosmas and Amanda Crosby, hosted a meeting with City Councilor John Mitchison and others from Haverhill's Dynamic Pathways for Middle School to work up, to work without boundaries. At this meeting, we discussed how we can continue to provide the necessary workforce development for our area. On Thursday, September 19th, I attended the MSBA Senior Study Walkthrough at Northern Essex Community College. I want to thank Kara Cosmas and Lane Glenn for all of their help to get us to this point. On Friday, September 20th, I, along with Kara Cosmas, hosted the Inspector General Shapiro and Representative Shan from our tour of Whittier. I really want to take them, thank them for taking the time to visit our school on a Friday afternoon. On Monday, September 23rd, I attended the Raleigh Select, Raleigh Select Board Meeting. At this meeting, Mr. Irving and I were able to provide an update to the board about Whittier Tech and its possible project with Northern Essex Community College. The next, on Thursday, September 26th, I sat, I sat at the Happy to Chat Bench in Raleigh, Public Library, for the Meet Your Neighbor Week in support of the Massachusetts Coalition to build community and loneliness. And I was happy Mr. Irving came along and sat with me, so I wasn't too lonely. So what a really nice event and what a really community atmosphere. I thought it was a wonderful idea. I just was glad I wasn't there waiting for someone to show up. So thank you, Mr. Irving. On Friday, September 27th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable Meeting in Danvers. Todd McGee was our guest speaker. He spoke about de-escalation techniques in regards to school safety. On September 30th, I attended the MAVA MSBA Group Remote Meeting. This is a group of CTE superintendents either in the MSBA pipeline or looking to get into the MSBA pipeline. It was a great opportunity to share information and ideas. And those kinds of conferences are really, I can't, you know, say enough about them because we really do learn from each other. Wednesday, October 2nd through Friday, October 4th, I attended the New England Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference in Westbrook, Connecticut, their workshop on curriculum instruction, school safety, public relations, et cetera. On Tuesday, October 8th, I was able to introduce the UMass Donahue Institute attendees for this first listening session. I want to thank Chris I want to thank Chris Leganes and the administrative team, teacher, staff, and students for an orderly dismissal last Thursday. It was a difficult situation, and it was handled amazingly well from everyone here at Whittier. So thank you. And, you know, just if you have, you know, listening to everyone today, I met a new teacher yesterday in the cafeteria while I was doing cafeteria duty. And, you know, I just said, how's it going? You know, how's everything working out? He just turned to me and said, I just need you to know, you have something really special going on here. So, you know, after listening to everyone, and I hope you realize, you know, what great work is happening here at Whittier Tech. And thank you for all of your support to getting us to this point, so thank you. And that's all I have tonight.
You have field trip approvals, too?
So I have two ski trip approvals, one to Pat's Peak in Henneker, New Hampshire, and that is on January 10th, 2025. And then I have another one on February 7th to Gunstock on February 7th, 2025.
Sir, motion to approve?
To approve both trips.
Motion by Mr. Irving, seconded by Mr. Murphy, Mr. Early.
Do we have the proper paperwork on both of them?
We will before they go.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Old business, new business, posted. New business, discussion about a possible date change for the November School Committee meeting. Wanted to bring this forward. We had a request from the YMCA to change the meeting. It is their annual Educator of the Year event on Wednesday night that they do in Haverhill. And they asked if we could switch so that the superintendent could be in attendance for that there. And I think there's someone from Whittier Tech nominated to the role.
Well, there will be teachers from Whittier.
Whittier Tech nominated, so they take nominations from all the Haverhill schools by, all the Haverhill Public Schools and Whittier for Teachers of the Year awards or Educator of the Year awards.
What month is this?
Next month's meeting, November. So they spoke to the superintendent. She was wondering if everyone's scheduled, if we could move that from the Wednesday to maybe a Tuesday.
That same week?
Yeah.
Make it a day before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would that be okay with everyone for the Tuesday, the day before?
What is the date?
The 12 would be the 12.
12?
Is there any objection to moving it to the 12th? So someone make a motion to move the November School Committee meeting to November 12th?
Make a motion?
Motion by Mr. Early, seconded by Mr. Irving. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you all. Reports, subcommittees, executive, non-constructional, and personnel, Ms. True.
Yep, we had a meeting. And we have minutes in your packet, and we, it was informational. We covered MCAS and curriculum updates, and it's all in packet, and...
Are you making a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. True, seconded by Mr. Irving.
Have a correction on that?
Sure.
On the adjournment? Mrs. Irving wasn't here.
Miss, oh, it's... But sometimes, well, just here at these meetings, but just...
All right. So we'll amend those, call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell? Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Plan operations, Mr. Murphy?
We have not met. I don't know if it's need for a meeting coming up.
Not right now.
Okay.
Salary and negotiations, Mr. Early?
We have not met recently, but we're due very soon.
All right. Policy, Mr. Irving?
Yes, I have minutes to present to the committee. The date was September 11th, minutes five.
Motion by Mr. Irving to approve the September 11th meeting,
seconded by Ms. Coppinger.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald? Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Mr. Irving, floor is still yours.
Chairman, we have, for our first reading this evening, we have some policies, and they should have been in your packet for your review. AC nondiscriminary policy, two ACGB Title IX sexual discrimination legal procedure. So I move those for the first reading.
Motion by Mr. Irving, seconded by, uh, who is that? Ms. True?
Ms. True.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Problem, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Fitzgerald? Seconded by Mr. Murphy. All in favor of adjournment? Anybody opposed? We're adjourned.